The flag.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could all please stand for a moment of silence and pray for the people of Israel. I don't know when all this violence in this world is going to stop, but I think we should all pray and hope it ends soon. So, please, let's say a prayer and hope all this violence works out. Thank you very much. Mr. Public Notice. The Council of Republicans, County of Union, State of New Jersey, and a quick notice has been given on Court's Appeal 1975, Chapter 231. An annual notice or revision was made in accordance of Section 13 of the Act. Right now, we have a public hearing of Ordinance 2306. Wendy, please read the public.
In ordinance of the Borough of New Providence, County of Union, State of New Jersey, amending zoning ordinance.
Okay, what this is, is the second reading to amend the signed York setbacks for townhouses in the C1 as a commercial district. Have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Anybody wishing to address counsel on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. We'll call, please.
This is Belitska.
Aye.
Mr. De Sarno.
Aye.
Mr. Kaminsky.
Aye.
Mrs. Joffrard.
Yes.
Mr. Kogan.
Yes.
Mrs. McKnight.
Yes.
Now I have a spin, pleasure and honor to give a proclamation to Bill Dunstum for his induction to the National Junior Athletic Association Golf Hall of Fame. I'm not going to say Billy, I know he's a good golfer. Whereas Bill Dunstum began his career at Union College in 1971, and whereas Bill Dunstum served as head golf coach for Union County College from 75 through 2019, and whereas, while as head coach, he led the team to win two GSAC championships, one Region 14 championship, had over 500 team victories, and seven Garden State Athletic Conference titles. And whereas Bill Dunstum coached one NJCAA All-American and forced an athlete to become professional golfers, and had an individual or team participate in 18 NJCAA national tournaments. And whereas in 1981, Bill Dunstum was inducted into the college's Athletic Hall of Fame. And whereas Professor Dunstum, we should say Dean, right? Received the Odi Ihasa Award from the National Junior College Athletic Association. And the Odi Ihasa Award is the highest sign attributed to a coach and is awarded to an individual who exemplifies and demonstrates committed service and dedication of Region 14, which includes New Jersey, Eastern Pennsylvania, and Delaware. And whereas in June, at the NJCAA National Division III National Golf Championship held in Chautauqua, which is New York, Bill Dunstum was inducted in the National Junior Athletic Association Golf Hall of Fame. And whereas Bill Dunstum is a lifelong resident of the Borough of New Providence and has performed many acts of community service, which includes the Lions Club, which we both participated in, and you've taught by senior citizens and art centers. So, now therefore, I am a reminder that we're under Providence, County of New Jersey, hereby heartily congratulate Bill Dunstum on his induction to the National Junior Athletic Association Golf Hall of Fame. That's quite an honor. You want to say a few words?
The success of being a good coach is to recruit right athletes to attend. And one of the things that I've been very fortunate with is I've had a number of athletes that have come who were not only athletes, but they were also scholars. They wanted to earn their way. And the fact that four of my players have gone on to become professional golfers, I'm very, very pleased about that. I should just tell you one thing. There is a big difference between being a golf coach and being a good golfer. And I'm so sure that I got that too. And so, one, helping the players keep their priorities straight, academics, also their athletics. Thank you very much. I'm very pleased.
Okay, I need approval of minutes for August 15th.
So moved?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Yes.
No, so there. Okay, first correspondence is from the Memorial Library and requests to share costs for the wetlands. I already talked to Mark Andres, the president, and Bernadette about this. I think we need to talk a little more about this. And we're going to meet with Stacy, Airboard, and Keith, and see what exactly they want to do here. So, okay, public service, electric, gas, worldwide vegetation management work, that's to clear vegetation of the transmission lines, okay? As I keep reiterating, at all the meetings, these utilities get statewide general permit, so this is just pretty much a, you know, just letting us know that they're going to be doing it. It's a courtesy, pretty much. Okay, Atlantic City Commissioner, I've got invitation to sign the offshore wind development support letter. And that's it. Any comments?
I'll talk a little bit about the library, just for a second.
They want a survey, and we don't know what the survey is.
So I was just going to give a little background as to why they're looking for the survey.
Okay.
I just, you know, I'm on the library board, so I just want to give a little bit of background on that. So the part of their strategic plan includes maybe expanding a little bit off to the side, in either the front or the back. They've gone through a couple of iterations of different floor plans. They can't really move forward, like Al said, until they get the survey. And because it's in wetlands, the survey's never been done, so there's no precedent. So, the balls are all up in the air right now, so to speak.
Any other comments? Seeing none. We'll go to administration. Lisa.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have Resolution 2023-272, the resolution authorizing the agreement between the Borough of New Providence and Munison?
Munition.
Munition. That's not, okay. Munition LLC for Citizen Experience Management Platform in the amount not to exceed $2,757. The reason for this is so that Munition could provide their Citizen Experience Management Platform, otherwise known as the Contact Us. This is the platform that we used to use on the old website. The module that came with the new website does not allow for more than seven users. We've been using the Civic Plus model, and it became very clear that it just, it wasn't working, and the functionality on that wasn't what we wanted, we needed. Residents will be able to access it using the Contact Us button on the homepage of the current website.
Just to be clear, right, so residents won't see a difference on the homepage, and it's more of a directional, when someone's contacting us, what happens on the backend within the borough, and who gets what?
Correct.
Thank you.
Next, we have the 2024 holiday and meeting schedule. This is what we put out every year this time. It's got the proposed holiday and council meetings for the following year. One thing that's different is we added Juneteenth as a borough holiday.
Okay, is everybody okay with the schedule?
The holiday schedule, I wanted to, actually, I had a couple comments. We'll discuss it now. Well, thank you, actually, to our borough for being so proactive with this, because they worked very hard doing this. I had one question about January. There's only one meeting in January? Actually, there's two meetings. There's the reorganization meeting, and then there's not one till the end. I was thinking, maybe we could add one on January 9th. So we've one on the 3rd, and then it's the 9th, the 16th, and then we have the 23rd. I think that, not that we want to do more work, but I think it would actually help us get all of our committees in line, and that was just one suggestion.
I think it's good to have something else where we do make sure that we're in alignment, and the committees are up and running, and everything's moving forward. So I think that would be a good addition.
Even if we just make it a working session?
I'm not sure.
Whatever's good for.
Once the reorg is done, and all the committees are set, that's kind of the week where they start meeting for the first time, right? You know, over those next two weeks. So, I'm not sure if it would be productive for that purpose, to have a council meeting. I mean, if Bernadette says that there's a lot of things from a, because I know the council, the reorg meeting is really, really long. We don't really try and do a lot of work in that session. So, in terms of operating the borough, if there's things that maybe we can, we need for operations perspective, I would agree 100%. I just don't know if council committee meetings and things of that nature, like I said, I think that's kind of the week where...
It was more, I, first year I was on council, we had a work session.
We did it a Saturday.
It was a Saturday, though.
And that was more of a committee transition, committee. But I think we're kind of covering that with the goals. It all depends on what, like, the goal.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we see how we land up? We just think 48 hours to, if we think we really need a meeting that month.
Okay.
Okay?
The other thing is in December this year, on the calendar, we only have one meeting. Like, in 2023, we have two meetings, but in December 2024, we only have one on the 3rd.
Yeah, that's a long time.
And I feel like it's a really long time.
December.
December. I mean, it would help with the running of the business.
Matt, that was the one we talked about in committee. There were two, and then we took the one out and made one.
I mean, we have the planning board meeting, conflicts, right, and then you got the holiday.
Wait, in 2023, it's council planning board, then council. This year, it's the conflicting one for 2024.
We talked about possibly adding one in committee, because it wasn't on the calendar that day. But we had talked about adding one because it was short that month.
The planning board will adjust their calendar according to your meeting schedule. It's on there right now, because there wasn't anything there. If you wanted to add one on the 17th, we could.
From your perspective, from running the borough, is it beneficial to have an additional one?
I mean, we're going to need to pay bills before the end of the month.
Okay.
We can add it in.
So we add that to 17th, the planning board, and most likely only have one meeting that month.
Yes. Yeah, because the 31st is a holiday. Well, it's New Year's Eve.
Works.
So, just to be clear, we're adding in the 17th?
Yeah.
Yes, please. And we're seeing how it goes in January.
Okay, great.
Okay. Rep. Denley, so beautification.
Beautification, Resolution 2023-273, Resolution approving the request of the New Providence Beautification Committee to sponsor holiday lighting in Centennial Park. We're going to be entering into a service agreement with Christmas Decor of New Jersey to provide holiday lighting in the park. They'll design, install, take down the lighting, and the holiday decorations. All lighting and decorations remain property of Christmas Decor. And this is paid for by the beautification committee, so it's all funds that they've raised. So, you know, we met with them, and I just, I'm excited. I think it's going to look great. We actually saw the vendor at a trade show, and it just sparked our, sparked our interest, and it's going to look great.
Community activities, Pete.
Thank you, Mayor. First, we have a request permission to bid for tennis court repairs. The bid would address the cracks on Courts 1 through 4 with repairs to the courts and repainting. It will also seek to repair cracks on Courts 5 through 8. This is being paid for using money that has been allocated in the capital plan as part of the ongoing maintenance to keep the courts in pristine condition. Resolution 2023-274 is a resolution approving purchase order for Ben Schaefer Recreation in the amount not to exceed $137,000 for Lyons Park Playground Equipment and Patio. This will replace the current structure at Lyons Park with one that is suitable for ages 2 to 5. Lyons Park plays host to our popular mini playground camp in the summer. This project is being paid for using a $35,000 Union County Kids Rec Trust Fund grant and capital money from the 2022 Capital Plan. Resolution 2023-275 is a resolution authorizing the application for 2023 T-Mobile Hometown Grant for the Borough of New Providence. T-Mobile is helping out to fund projects to foster local connections, like technology upgrades, outdoor spaces, the arts, and community centers. This grant is seeking money for a new sound system, outdoor speakers, and landscape lighting for Centennial Park. Wow, that's going to help our concerts, I guess. Resolution 2023-276 is a salary resolution, appointing a youth program instructor and moving mic for lease from Brush Driver II Program Assistant at the Decorso Center. And finally, Resolution 2023-277 is a resolution accepting the proposal of Collier Engineering and Design, Inc., for professional surveying and engineering design services regarding pickleball courts. So, this is for survey, design, and bidding services related to the installation of permanent pickleball courts in the tennis complex adjacent to the existing tennis courts. I was just speaking with our borough administrator. I think she's had some preliminary rough discussions about what possible approximate numbers a project like this could cost. I don't know if you could add any additional.
In speaking to the borough engineers, we're looking at, you know, in the neighborhood of $100,000 a court, depending on whether there'll be lighting, if we can use the existing stanchions, if the lot has to be graded. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that will determine what the final cost of the project is. But as with every large-scale project, we'll be going out to bid for it.
Do these projects change at all from what we were originally talking about? Were we talking, I mean, how many courts were we originally saying?
The plan that you guys, that's attached to the resolution, is it shows five. It could be two, but five fit. So after they come back with the survey, we'll have a better idea of actually what's usable and what's not.
That's what we're paying for. Paying for the engineers to do the, do the, do the survey, and then design it and cram it in.
That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2023-278, Resolution approving requisition R2301-821 for hand and floor covering in the amount not to exceed $48,195.38 for municipal center carpet replacement. This is to replace the worn carpeting at the municipal center on the second and third floors. It's about 18 years old, the carpet.
Finance, Diane. Oh, wait, Lisa.
Thanks, Mayor. Resolution 2023-279 is a resolution authorizing the payment of the attached bills payable list in the amount of $2,490,716.63. Some of the more significant items, we're getting used to seeing this, right? The Board of Education, $1,411,046 for their October payment. City of Summit, $331,862. This is New Providence's share of the Division Avenue project. This was paid with capital funds. So, I think we've talked about this before. We each took half so that we got a nice new street. Mountain Valley Dispatch, $190,307. This is the fourth quarter payment, and also our last payment to Mountain Valley Dispatch. Going forward, our cost savings will be significant for dispatch. State of New Jersey, we're looking at $125,658 for the October state health benefit premium. And the New Providence Library, their October payment was $93,300.
Legal, Diane.
I believe McKinley Mertz will be giving us a presentation first.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
In case you don't remember me, I'm your planner. I'm here about the amended spending plan that I believe Bernadette passed out to everybody. Before I get into the details of what the spending plan is amending, I'm just going to do a quick recap on why we have a spending plan and what it is. A lot of you were here for the last round of affordable housing. Some of you were not. So just a reminder, or brand-new information, if that's the case. The last time the borough adopted a spending plan was in 2019. That's when we were deep in the thick of going through our Mount Laurel obligations, working with the courts, working with our court master. We did get approval of that 2019 spending plan from the court, as well as the housing element and fair share plan that listed various existing affordable housing projects the borough has, proposed projects, and mechanisms to, to build those developments and meet the obligation. The spending plan is a requirement of part of that process, part of the Mount Laurel process. Back in 2008, the borough adopted, when the original third round process was going on, the borough adopted its first development fee ordinance. So what that did was it allowed the borough to collect fees on all construction projects, mostly on commercial projects. There's a very small fee associated with new residential, but it's a 2.5% fee for commercial projects. So over the years, that, that fund has grown quite a bit, and we have to put a plan together to talk about how we're going to spend those funds. And that's what the spending plan does. So it walks through all of the available monies. A few categories that we have to make, or is break down to administrative expenses. So, for example, anything that my office does, or Paul's office does, associated with what we're doing tonight, can come out of the administrative expenses from the trust fund. The other categories include an affordability assistance program, which has been set up to help existing affordable units that are already deed restricted. If anybody needs help with moving costs, first year, first month utility, first month rent, there's a program in place for that already. The final category is a general rehabilitation or new construction category. And this could be anything from a rehab program, which, which the borough does have. It's specifically for rental units, so substandard rental units that need very large system upgrades. We're talking HVAC equipment, new roofs, anything electrical or plumbing related. Those would qualify as rehab, and we could give money from the trust fund for that. And then the second half of that is new construction. So if there was a new affordable development that were to come in and needed assistance, usually we're talking a group home, assisted living of some kind, or a project that is 100% affordable with no market rate in it. The borough can spend money on supporting those developments. So, all of the spending plans we've done, this actually is the third one that the council is reviewing. They, they break down the existing balance. We project out what we think the borough is going to get towards the end of this round. The round ends in 2025, so our projections are becoming pretty short at this point. We look at past balances, past collections in the trust fund. That's how we do that projection. And then we have to say how we're going to spend every single cent in the, in the fund. It doesn't mean that we're, you're going to work this fund down to $0 in the next year and a half, but it just means that we have all the money allocated, should we need it. Before we get into the amendment for tonight, does anyone have any questions about what the spending plans are for, anything I just said? Okay.
I think, I think it's informative if we tell everybody that if we don't spend the money, the state's going to take it from us. So, we might as well spend this money and increase the, better the quality of life for our seniors here, to rehab our facilities.
Thank you, Mary. I appreciate that. Yes. If, and that's not just the borough, it's any municipality in New Jersey. If they decide, when I say "they," it's probably Fair Share Housing Center, but really, it's the DCA. If they decide to start looking into municipalities' trust funds, and they find out that towns have not been spending the money they've been collecting, they can take those funds and put them into the state Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Also, on that note, the funds from this account cannot be spent on anything besides affordable housing, and they cannot be used as loans. You cannot request the money back unless there's a, a down payment assistance program. There's certain caveats with that. But generally speaking, you cannot give out loans and expect money to be paid back. So, and that's a good point the mayor made. We do, we want to spend these funds, and as I'm about to tell you, we have some really good uses for some of these funds at the moment. So that brings us to the Elizabeth Barabash Manor, which is right across the street here. I'm sure everyone is familiar with it. It does consist of 22 low-income senior units. So everybody in that development, and I apologize, I can't remember if it's a 55 and older or 62 and older, but regardless, it is restricted for senior. No families in that, in that development. It was built in the mid-'90s. We've, myself, Paul, your administrative team, we've all done a little bit of digging. Thank God for Wendy. She has archives everything going back 30 years or so. So, we tried to trace them what was happening here, because earlier this year, Bernadette got a notice from the bank that the Elizabeth Barabash Manor had defaulted on their mortgage that they had taken on 2013. The borough does own the land. That is borough-owned property. In the '90s, it was leased to an organization called the Church Coalition for New Providence Affordable Housing Corporation. We're just going to call it the Church Coalition. In the '90s, the funding associated with this was through HUD, and there was a specific program that required a religious affiliation, and I believe that's how we got to that. So they, they leased the property and constructed the building that has the rental units in it. The deed restriction on those units is 30 years, so it's set to expire the last day of February 2025. So really, it's an appropriate time to be doing what we're doing, because we don't want to let those restrictions expire. We want to make sure that those units remain affordable for the senior population. It's not just the senior population of New Providence. They are available to anybody in the area who, who wishes to submit an application, but it's, it's an important demographic that we want to continue to serve. So the amendment to the spending plan, and I should say, based on a conversation we were having earlier, any major expenditures that come out of this fund have to be line itemed in this plan. So that is, the original 2019 spending plan set aside $100,000 for the Elizabeth Barabash Manor. Back then, we thought we were going to need to replace their roof. We tried to give them that money. We tried very hard. And when the pandemic hit, we had a harder time getting in touch with them, and they ultimately rejected the money. But because we are proposing, at this point, $550,000, we needed to amend that line item, because that's obviously, that's quite a bit more money than had been planned for and that the court had approved. So the $550,000 will satisfy, it's about $437,000 that are owed, that's owed on the mortgage. That will satisfy the mortgage and cover any additional interest or fees that are associated with that. It is specific that any money not spent will be returned back to the fund. So we'll, we'll cap out, and then if there's any left, it'll come back, come back to the trust. What this good, this, this isn't so much a spending plan detail, but it was important to add, is it's the context of the property. The borough, under my recommendation and Paul's recommendation, neither one of us recommended the borough become landlords of this property. Once you satisfy the mortgage, it, it becomes yours. And I would never recommend a governing body, municipality, be a landlord. So what is proposed in the spending plan is to sell the property for a very nominal fee of $1 to a acceptable, approvable, a well, someone who's really experienced in the community, a developer who's good at maintaining buildings, upgrading buildings, and specifically renting them out for qualified low-income individuals and households. The organization that was identified is called Community First Initiative. They have maintained, developed, monitored rental projects all over New Jersey. They have maintained, developed, monitored rental projects all over New Jersey. I'm not as familiar with one right here in Union, but I know they've done Monmouth, they've done Somerset, I believe, Morris County, so in the area. So they will take over, there will be a deed of sale. The important part of this, though, is that should the property ever cease to be used for affordable housing, it will revert, the ownership will revert back to the Borough. Because we don't want Community First Initiative to, you know, some act of God. In 15 years, they end up going out, they can't do it anymore. It will revert back to the Borough and we'll figure out the process when and if that happens. But regardless, it will always be maintained as affordable, and with this, we will extend the deed restriction at least another 30 years. I think there was discuss of maybe even 40. But that will also hopefully allow us to capture these additional credits in the next round. In the past, Fair Share has given us credits when a development was assigned to a previous round, but then we upped the use restrictions. We were able to accept those credits again because now they're serving a completely different population, is the theory. I say that with a caveat because, as we all know, Fair Share sometimes changes their mind, but that is my experience in the past. So we are hoping that we can claim additional credits with this in the future. So the plan lays all this out, and it identifies the expenditure for this. It really doesn't touch the other categories with the exception of fulfilling the required percentages for each category. And the focus on this amendment really is the Barabash Manor. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. That is the basis, though, of what you're reviewing tonight.
Just one comment, one question. Just to make sure we're clear, the trust fund itself, it doesn't have $60 million in it, right? So that we don't, I know people ask, you know, when we were finalizing our plan, why don't we just buy property and build affordable housing units, right? Number one, we're not in the business of being a landlord, like you said. Number two, you know, it's a million, two, I think, in the trust, something like that, right?
As of early September is 1.5.
1.5.
Yeah.
So I just want to make that comment. And my question is, are we, or can we, if it's not in here, ask them to make specific upgrades or spend at least the amount of the money of the mortgage amount that we're paying down for them to upgrade the building?
Yeah, that's a really good question because the building needs significant upgrades. The Borough has been working with them, and part of the agreement will be those upgrades. The $550,000 will go specifically to satisfying the mortgage. However, we are aware that there is money available from the county and the state, too. Yeah, for both the county and the state. They are working on entering into agreements with those entities, but there's, I believe, a million dollars? Yeah, a million dollars available for the upgrades. Should that prove not to be enough, we could use the rehabilitation category of the Borough's trust that could also be assigned to it. As of right now, their estimate, because they have reviewed the building, they've provided an estimate for how much the upgrades will cost. The money available from the county and the state should cover the needed upgrades. And we're talking roofs, HVAC, all new appliances in the kitchens. I think the stoves are maybe original. So we absolutely, that they will be updated to current standards.
Awesome. Thank you.
So Community First would be the landlord?
Correct.
Collect, they would be collecting?
The owner, owner slash, I mean landlord's not quite the right term because it's a different relationship, but yeah, they would be managing and owning the building.
And collecting the rents? And making sure that everything is up to par?
Yes, and they are a nonprofit organization, yeah. And we also, you know, as the Borough, there's the capacity, you know, inspections, making sure everything does get renovated. They'll have to pull building permits, so there will be oversight from the Borough.
And if they cease using it for affordable purposes, the deed will have a provision and it reverts back to us. Right. Because we need those credits.
Yes.
Very happy to see that. My grandmother used to live there for about 12 years.
Oh, wow, yeah.
And back then, that was five years ago, it was in need of repair then. So I'm very happy to see this, so thank you.
Absolutely. This is going to be a good benefit for the community.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So then that brings us to Resolution 2023-280, a resolution of the Borough of New Providence approving second amendment to the trust fund spending plan, which Ken just gave us an overview of. Then, I'm just going to reiterate, municipalities with an affordable housing trust fund, which we have, are required to receive approval of our spending plan or a court-competent jurisdiction prior to spending any of the funds in the housing trust fund. This amended plan includes using the funds of about $550,000 to acquire the Elizabeth Barabash Manor and satisfy the mortgage from the Church Coalition of New Providence Affordable Housing Corporation. And then next, we have the introduction of ordinance 2023-08. Do I have to ask you to read it? I don't know what protocol is. It's an ordinance of the Borough of New Providence, County of Union, State of New Jersey, authorizing the sale of property known as Lot 29 in Block 12 that is no longer needed for public use. And this ordinance will authorize the sale of the property by auction between which there are contiguous properties for a minimum price of $340 as determined by the Borough Tax Assessor. This property was a remnant piece, and it has, it is less than the minimum size required for development, and it has no capital improved, has no capital improvements, and it's no value to the Borough.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2023-281 is a resolution approving request of the New Providence Mental Health Advocacy and Education Advisory Committee to sponsor community events from October 2023 to May of 2024. If you recall, we had applied for a grant back in 2023, and we are using some of the remaining of those funds to move us forward into the beginning of 2024. So we're just getting ahead of it. So they are looking to participate in the street fair in October. So they are going to partner with Municipal Alliance to host a table. They will have kindness rocks, as well as information about programs that both groups run. They're looking to have a Spirit of New Providence High School and social media campaigns during the month of December. They're looking to distribute green rally towels, you know, those green towels, at New Providence High School basketball game and hosting a table in the lobby. They're also going to be posting some social media campaigns about the different stressors during the holiday season and bring awareness to vulnerable calendar time periods. Between, and that's December. January to May, they are looking to have parent workshop series. And this is, again, they're going to be partnering with the Municipal Alliance that bring awareness to pressures placed on youth in high-achieving communities, which New Providence definitely qualifies. They're looking, again, to partner with Municipal Alliance to continue their quarterly trainings of the suicide prevention, the QPR, that we always talk about. And that's going to be for coaches, parents, youth leaders, and community members to teach them how to recognize someone in crisis, talk to them, and direct them. And we are going to be having our Mental Health Awareness Month again in May. So just like we had last month, we would like to have a proclamation about it. We would like to have the green ribbons that we had all around the poles. They don't have on there if they want to use the QR codes, but I thought that worked very well last time. They want to have a random acts of kindness tree at the library. They want to walk in the Memorial Day Parade. We're going to be hanging up our banner again in the park. They want to use the electronic bulletin board. We're going to have sidewalk chalk messages, yard sign, a poster and art contest, social media campaign, and we're going to paint the town green again at the stores and Green Ribbon Day at the high schools. And probably have the green lights both at Harley's and the Adams Shopping Center. So it was such a great success last time, we're looking to expand on it. Again, we're looking to start conversations to remove the stigma about mental health. So, great group, very passionate about their cause, and looking forward to helping them out this year.
Yeah, it's great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2023-282 is a resolution to terminate all participation under the HSHBP and SEHBP, including prescription drug plan and our dental plan coverage. So this approves our termination of participation in our state health benefit plan. Our 2024 renewal came in with a 7.09% increase in our annual premium, totaling $112,461. And as you know, in our budget in 2023, we had an increase of almost 22%. So this is allow us to terminate that. 283 is a resolution accepting the proposal of Horizon Blue Cross, Blue Shield of New Jersey for the provision of medical and prescription drug coverage for the year 2024. So this is us now entering into an agreement with Horizon, Blue Cross, Blue Shield. This is going to save, this contract will save the Borough 3.4% compared to our 2023 rates with the HSHBP. And if my math serves me correct, that's roughly $50,000, $50-plus thousand. Resolution 284 is a resolution appointing Geraldo Rivera as a videographer for the Borough of New Providence, County of Union, and State of New Jersey. Geraldo is going to be our new videographer, starting in November as Brian Hogarth's retirement at the end of the month. And Geraldo's in the back there learning the ropes, so welcome. Resolution 285 is a resolution accepting written retirement resignation from Mark Alaco as road person for the Borough of New Providence Streets and Roads Department. Mark Alaco is going to be retiring at the end of the year, effective December 31st. He has worked for the Borough for the past 11 years. We want to thank Mark for his service to our community. And lastly, we have an authorization to advertise for a road person vacancy that Mark is leaving. So, you know, a successful candidate for this position will possess or have the ability to obtain a CDL Class A license within one year of being hired. And this position will start January 2nd of 2024.
Okay. You're right, want to thank Mark for his service, but I also want to thank Bernadette. You looked, you spent a lot of time looking for an outside insurer, and we're saving money from this current year's premium. So I want to thank you. As you know, the state increased our, all municipalities, or in the state of church, it gained 22.8% this year. And they did it to not only municipalities, but the county employees. And the state employees only got, I think, a 3% increase. And I don't know how that's fair or equitable, but, you know, I know we're not the only municipality looking to get out. So I just want to, you know, make everybody aware and thank you for all the work that you did with that. Okay, we have public safety, and I'm very pleased to announce that we're appointing Ron Cadetti as a professional police officer for the police department. He's been working and doing a fabulous job as one of our sleigh of two officers since January. And he'll have some vacancy left by Officer DePurisi. And it's conditional that on him, has it medical and psychological and the required background checks. And I know, I'm sure he'll be fine. And he has a little extra work to do in a police academy. I think they have to do like two weeks extra to become a regular officer from the sleigh of two. Resolution 287, approving requisitions for the fire department for protective equipment And half the money was used from the American Rescue Plan, the grant that we got. 288 is resolution and addendum between the participating police departments and Trinitas Medical Center establishing joint participation in the YRIDE program. And it's been working out very well. They sent a counselor around with the police officers. They have sections all over Union County with towns combined. And I think Chief Hem said that usually when they had a mental crisis, that it would usually last about two hours to call, and this has actually brought it down to about 30 minutes. So it is very effective, and the results are usually very good. Okay. 289, requisition for computer systems and methods. Not to exceed $55,000, and that's for the fire department, mobile dispatch terminals. Okay, for the fire department. Resolution 290 is a resolution for Cassiano Associates, not to exceed $27,000 for the dispatch terminals for the fire department. And Resolution 291 is resolution for Motorola, and that's approving radios for the rescue squad. And they need this because there's a lead time of 18 to 28 weeks. So, you know, we all knew with the change of dispatch center and everything that we were going to have to upgrade our computer systems and radios, and this is just part of it. Our transition over is right on schedule, from what I hear, so.
I'd just add to some of that, so this is stuff that we would have had to have upgraded, even if we didn't change over anyway.
Exactly.
And I do want to point out that the quarterly payment that we're making to the dispatch center for our final payment is about what we're paying for our entire year next year. So the significant savings that we're saving just on that alone is incredible.
Okay. Public works, Alex.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2023-292, resolution approving requisition number R2301900 for Rapid Pump and Meter Service Company in the amount not to exceed $170,000. Bergen County Co-op Contract Number 21-13 for wastewater treatment low-lift pumps. This is approving three low-lift pumps for the wastewater treatment plant. These are 1970 variety, lasted well past their life cycle. And I think it's a testament to Anthony and his team for having these pumps run for over 50 years.
They repair them themselves.
That's correct.
And save the Borough a significant amount of money.
Resolution 2023-293, authorizing the Borough of New Providence Safe Routes to School Project and the application for safe routes to school funding to make infrastructure improvements that will improve the walking environment for students. This is requesting permission to apply for the 2024 Safe Routes to School Grant. Resolution 2023-294, resolution approving number R2301851 for Griffin Automotive Information Services Service in an amount not to exceed $5590 for automotive air conditioning machine. This is the purchase of an AC machine for the new model police vehicles that we have. Resolution 2023-295, resolution approving requisition number R2301831 for Rapid Pump and Meter Service Company in an amount not to exceed $29,790. Again, Bergen County Co-op Contract 21-13 for wastewater treatment bar screen enhancements. This is for additional enhancements to the bar screen at the wastewater treatment plant that we installed earlier in the year. Resolution 2023-296, resolution approving requisition R2301814 for EnviroSite LLC in the amount not to exceed $12,572.39 for sewer main video camera repairs. This is to approve a repair to the sewer main inspection system. A brand-new one would cost approximately $50,000. This one, the repair would only cost us $12,500. Resolution 2023-297, resolution amending Resolution 2023-266 from earlier in the year. Resolution approving requisition R2301742 for MJ Pepe &amp; Sons, Inc. in the amount not to exceed $20,750 for the Decorso Center driveway repairs. This was adopted September 19th, 2023. The previous resolution included drainage work only. This is amended resolution, will include paving of the Decorso Center driveway. The total cost of the project is $40,000. The total cost of the project is forty thousand five hundred twenty dollars. Thirty thousand dollars of this project is being paid for, paid for with the C D B G grant. Uh, resolution twenty twenty three dash two nine eight, resolution approving requisition R two three zero one zero six eight for uh, Shifano, is that proper? Shifano Construction Corp. in the amount not to exceed three hundred seventy five thousand dollars. Uh, M C C P C Contract Number Six for twenty twenty three Road Overlay Program. This resolution approving paving on the roadways that have been disturbed by P S, P S E N G gas main replacement projects. As with the Phase One project, the borough is working in conjunction with P S E N G to ensure roads are paved curb to curb on each road that was part of the gas line replacement. P S E N G is only responsible pay, to pave half of the road they were working on unless the road was paved within the last five years. That's all I have.
Okay, I think we had a discussion item at the uh, conference meeting. Uh, committee reports, Diane?
Um, we had a very successful sustainability event, uh, the Free Cycle. Um, Free Cycle Fest. Historical Society has um, a couple of things coming up, Four Centuries in a Weekend, which is the twenty first and the twenty second. Godded Cemetery Tours, which are also, I believe, um, on the twenty second. Um, and there's a lot of stuff going on, so look at their website. Um, and I think that's about it.
Can I just comment on that uh, Free Cycle event? What a great event it was. Uh, my wife, we just left. Um, I had a car full load of stuff. I made three trips and every time the stuff was gone already by the time I put it out, so. And that wasn't just me, that was everybody in the crowd, so everybody responsible did a great job.
Yeah, I think it just grows bigger and bigger every year and uh, the more uh, people know about it and the more we spread the word. I think it's nice to have things repurposed and have new homes.
Sounds like Council on Coogin has good stuff. Uh, just one quick announcement, Mayor. Uh, winter recreation basketball registration is open for children grades one through eight on Community Pass. That's it.
So, uh, beautification committee, I met with the troop, what, what troop was that again? Sixty three, thank you. I know you wanna give an update. I just wanna say, uh, you know, we helped clean up the park and uh, I was cleaning dirt out of my fingernails for a couple of days, but uh, a lot of fun. Park looks great. They did a phenomenal job. Um, and the car show, I did not get to attend the car show. Uh, unfortunately, or I should say fortunately, I was, I had to go to my daughter play, um, fall ball. But I, I did look at the pictures and I, P B A, just what a great event that they were, they've turned that into. I mean, that, that car show, I think ten years ago or what, whatnot was like five cars and you know, they were usually just local people and I'm seeing pictures of Lamborghinis and, and, and Corvettes from ten different generations. I mean, it's awesome. Really, really great job. Uh, wish I could have went. The pictures looked awesome and uh, look forward to next year's.
Yeah, I think they would have had a lot more cars if it didn't rain on Saturday.
And I will tell you, I didn't see all the cars, but I did see, and I, I don't know if you were gonna talk about it, but the sixty eight Mustang? Gorgeous, gorgeous.
He, he's actually a resident too.
Oh, that's awesome.
And uh, one of my best friends from years ago, he had that exact same car. He lives in Connecticut and taking a picture, he goes, wow, so. Um, wanna bring up that uh, Fireman's Appreciation Day is on Saturday. And you can go and see, go to the fire department. It'll be great for kids. They could go in the fire trucks and look at all the apparatus and the fire department will be uh, as is the Packer Club to uh, cook and serve hot dogs for your charge and popcorn. So it should be a, a, a really good time for everybody.
That, Mayor, that, that event is rain or shine.
Rain or shine, and it's eleven to.
You're gonna get what, no matter what?
Eleven to three. It's Saturday.
Right, so, well, the bays are baited up for everybody to walk around, so it should be a lot of fun. And I, I know the kids really enjoy it. I'm sure they have a lot of those plastic helmets for the kids too. So um, one thing I did wanna bring up, and it came kinda, kinda close to home, is that there was a uh, a burglary of a car and it was diagonally across the street from me. And uh, not only did they steal the car, but they cut the screen, went through an open window and grabbed a fob off, off the table. Um, the kids and the chief and I had a long, I had a long discussion about it. The problem is, eh, they, with the kids, they slap them on the hand and they're right back out again. You know, it, 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 it's a real failure of a, of the judicial system, really. Um, I just, uh, eh, I don't know what the answer is, but I, I will ask everybody, you know. If you get up for some reason during the night, just look out the window, look around the neighborhood. If you see something that's, that's irregular, just call the police. They're happy to go. Um, you know, people say to me, well, why can't we park our cars on the street at night? This is why, you know, cars shouldn't be parked on the street. And, you know, usually if they are, there's a record of it at dispatch. Uh, you know, that car was called in and they had to do driveway page or something. But, you know, if it's not, the police run the plates, they know who's there, they know why it's there. So let the police be vigilant and I don't know what, what the answer is. I, I mean, the chief, we, we are talking, we're telling everybody, make sure you bring your, your keys inside, don't leave stuff in the car. Now, we tell people that and then people are breaking into the house. It is very concerning. And I mean, we've been lucky in this community, right Diane, for, for a long time. I mean, we do have some uh, car thefts, but not like in the surrounding communities. So I just ask people, please be vigilant, keep your eyes open and don't be afraid to report irregularities. So it, it'll help everybody all the way around. So that's all I have. Maybe?
Um, I already reported on mental health, so operations normal.
Great, Alex?
Not much to report on the engineering side apart from, you see the infrastructure improvements we're making in the plant. Um, this week later, this week Bernadette uh, and I and other, uh, and Council Beliska are meeting with P S E N G. We've been talking about all the infrastructure eh, enhancements being done, but with the water company, uh, the gas company, we just wanna touch base with the electrical utility to see what infrastructure improvements they might have pending.
Great, Mason?
I spoke a little bit before about the library, how they are undergoing their strategic plan. Um, to, you know, add some nice significant changes to the library. So they are looking to, of course, try and raise some money for that. Um, so part of that fundraising is the Friends of the Library will be doing a murder mystery on November eleventh. Uh, November fourth, November fourth. Thank you, Donna, you are.
Good coach.
You, you corrected me last time too, so thank you for being here. Um, November fourth. Um, the last we checked, there were only a couple of tickets still available, so it's gonna be a lot of fun. It's gonna be um, like in the uh, stacks and it just sounds very cool, so. Uh, if you're interested in that, helping the library raise some funds, that, that should be good. Um, Matt mentioned uh, last Sunday at the, at Centennial Park. We had Boy Scout Troop sixty three there. They were an awesome group of young men. Um, they really just make us proud, right, to have these kids in town. Like eh, they're uh, just so amazing how they roll up their sleeves and they don't complain. They were there on a Sunday morning, right? They're high school kids. They're on Sunday morning digging in the dirt, pulling weeds. Um, they planted about twenty five mums in the front over by the um, nine eleven memorial. They weeded, they trimmed back overgrown growth. Uh, they were there for about three hours. There were at least ten of them. And so thank you very much to Troop sixty three for that and hopefully next week we'll get, get them in here and give them a formal thank you. Beautification.
It, it was really nice. I went over and I was talking to them and they were asking me about the, the, the different monuments in, in the uh, in Centennial Park, about that monument that we got from Texas.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's a lot of history there and I can't believe it's been, you know, we, we dedicated that to two thousand and two. So I mean, it's really amazing. So we just did the renovations on it, so it look, it looks good and keep building on it.
Alex reminded me, there was another scout project in town and that was the bench around the tree in front of the library.
Beautiful.
In the grave.
Beautiful.
I think it was Patton, Patton maybe?
Yes.
Trip one.
Trip one.
Yeah, that really is nice.
Uh, and I forgot to mention, beautification did purchase all the flowers that were planted back on Sunday, yeah.
Great, okay, Bernadette?
Uh, just a few things, Mayor. Uh, once again, residents have three options for leaf collection. We're heading into leaf season. Um, all the rain is, seems to be bringing them down. You can either bag your leaves and brush will be continued to be collected through December on Mondays. Uh, you can have your landscaper collect your leaves. If they're putting them at the curb for us to pick up, you need a leave to the curb on your own. You definitely need a leave permit. Fifty, permits are fifty five dollars. They're available online or through the clerk's office. Uh, permits will not be sold after Monday, November twentieth. So if you're procrastinating buying that permit, please get out there and do it because you're gonna get shut out and you'll be bagging those leaves at the end of the month. Uh, leaf collection starts on the west side of town on October twenty third and the east side of town on the thirtieth. And we do recognize that there's not a, a lot of leaves that fall in the, as those first pickups. Um, so those people who do tend to procrastinate the leaf permit, don't realize that until all the leaves are down, they can be getting it now. Um, I had a meeting with P S E N G today. They are working to get some of our roads closed ahead of the winter. Um, and before the asphalt companies close down for the season. So Tilcon uh, paving will be doing restoration work in the borough on Wednesday and Thursday. Some of the patchwork that was done uh, with the gas line, line replacement um, has led to subpar patchwork, so they're gonna take care of that. Um, and then on Friday, they are going to give me a milling and paving schedule for the roads that P S E N G is, is responsible for. Um, and they're anticipating that uh, weather permitting, of course, work should begin on or around uh, September. I mean, October twenty third on Park Place, Crescent, Livingston, Central, Stone Ridge, South Great, South Gate, Possum, Princeton and Jones Drive. Um, there is some consideration, uh, we did talk about Jones Drive being a school zone. Um, they are going to, you know, talk, they're, they're talking about possibly doing it on a Saturday. Um, as everyone knows, the last few Saturdays have just been a washout, so um, we're, we're gonna work with them to see what we can do. Um, additionally, uh, let's see, uh, milling and paving schedule um, will be posted on the website. They're anticipating seven to eight days for the milling, six to seven days for paving, um, and then they'll wrap those up. Additionally, the borough will be working with Shifano Paving, uh, which was the resolution that is on the agenda for tonight. Um, to pave the remaining streets, which is Surrey, Darby, Birch, Charnwood and Edward. Um, once we get, uh, once we hear from Shifano Paving about their schedule and their timetable, um, we'll get them out there as well. Um, we generally have until mid-November before um, the asphalt factories shut down for the, for the winter. So we are trying to push this through before that. Um, the water company is also finishing up water main replacement on Walton, Vista, Osborne and Walker. Uh, their last connection was tied in today. They're doing inventory of their supplies and they should have everything off the street by Friday. And then they will give us a paving schedule for those roads also. And those roads uh, through the water company are also curb to curb. And then lastly, for me, uh, the police department will once again be taking part in the D E A National Prescription Drug Takeback Day on October twenty eighth from ten to two in the police parking lot. Uh, the police department encourages residents to bring any expired, unused or unwanted medications on this day for proper disposal. Um, and that will tie me into giving the microphone to my good friend Chief Hen.
They woke up.
Thank you, uh, Mayor and Council for having me here. I just wanted to, first of all, I wanted to just talk about Anthony Carnaval's record keeping um, at the wastewater treatment plant, his um, very good record keeping during Ida. We, we lost several pumps down there. We're able to be re, uh, refunded through FEMA uh, because we can justify the flow rates, um, the, the cause, the, the history of the pumps that were there. And essentially, uh, FEMA picked up the cost, a, a large portion of the cost for uh, for those pump replacements out the wastewater treatment. So he does a great job down there.
Well, I wanna thank you because I don't think people realize how much work it takes to, to get FEMA money back. And uh, you know, I was shocked when, when, during Hurricane Floyd, but and we've gone through Sandy, Irene, and we've gone through all of it. But the amount of work that the chief has done to get these FEMA funds, not only working with FEMA, but you have to go through the state, it's a nightmare. And people think that, oh, FEMA's in here, you're gonna get your money right away. Well, guess what? You don't get that money for a couple of years down the road. And, you know, and people said, well, you know, you have, um, um, you, you, you have a, I, I hate using surplus. But that's what it's used for. You have to get these uh, projects done, roads fixed, bridges replaced. And you have to wait two, sometimes three years to get the money back.
Reserves.
Reserves, yeah. So, yeah, I'm, I'm from the old school. But um, you know, a, and I know you fight with FEMA all the time and trying to justify all our costs, so. I just wanna thank you because people don't realize.
Yeah, so Ida was September of two thousand and twenty one, we're two years removed. And we're still, we still haven't recuperated a large portion of the funding that we've requested. Um, ho, hopefully the large majority of it is done. Um, some of those things are easy to see, like the, the bridges, especially the bridge that, that affected Robert schools for such a long period. Um, but, you know, there's work, there's infrastructure projects in the borough that, that people don't normally see that, you know, we're looking for funding for, so. And it, it's very, it's, it's very time consuming. Um, you know, FEMA has people that work on it full time. You know, it's just a, a small portion of my day, but it does take, consume a lot of, when we're working on it, it consumes a lot of the time, so I appreciate the knowledge from you. Um, I, I just wanted to touch base too briefly, uh, what the mayor had talked about related to um, the burglaries that had just taken place that were, you know, publicly discussed. Um, you know, I, I'm sure everybody can quite understand that, you know, we're, we're not immune from crime here in, in New Providence. I think we're situated well, um, just based upon our geographic location between seventy eight and twenty four. Uh, that are, we don't take the direct hits that our neighboring communities do initially. Uh, but inevitably, they do come here to New Providence. So, you know, those common sense things that we talk about, about taking fobs in, you know, replacing lights on your property, making sure you're locking your doors. You know, I, I know for, you know, people discuss, like, you know, we, we come here, we live in this town, it's a safe community and I wanna be able to feel safe in my own home and leave my doors unlocked and go to the store um, and not have to worry about that stuff. But eh, you know, as a police officer here for twenty three years, I just have to remind everybody, you know, eh, you know, this is not um, the, the time to be reminiscent about those, the way it used to be. You know, you need to um, be diligent about um, having lighting on your property. Um, I can tell you that cameras are fantastic, but c- cameras are, um, they're, they're not they don't stop the crime happening. Um, they, they just help us try and solve crime. Um, to, to the mayor's point, uh, mu, much of what's going on over the past, I would say eighteen months in this general vicinity of um, this western edge of Union County and parts of Lower Mars County um, is crime being committed by juveniles. You know, our, our state associations are constantly lobbying um, our uh, state officials to be aware um, of the ramifications of law changes. And I don't wanna call it leniency, but um, there's, tends to be a disposition on, well, if they got caught once, that, that's like the wake up call. But we, we see crime analysis that comes from the state police and through our fusion centers that indicates that there's a re, a, a recidivism rate through a lot of these juveniles who through a lot of these juveniles who just, you know, commit crimes. They know that there, there's limited enforcement and, um, and they're very difficult to, to prove. You know, um, the reality of it is the criminals have gotten smarter. They take proactive measures to inhibit our investigation, even though oftentimes they might be caught on video. So, uh, in, in one instance that, um, that followed up the night where the vehicle was stolen last week, um, we were fortunate enough to interrupt what was probably a burglary that was taking place, um, on the, uh, western side of our town, on the eastern side of our town. So, you know, our officers are out there every day. Um, we're out there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, working for the citizens of New Providence, patrolling the streets of New Providence. Um, you know, there's many things that we do. You know, there's, we talk a lot about our community relations stuff. Um, but, you know, at the end, at its core, you know, we're police officers and it's our job to enforce the law, to catch people doing bad stuff. So, you know, fundamentally, yeah, we build relationships and it, the, the, we can't do our job without the public participating in this project. So, um, I, I just want to be able to, to speak to you and speak to the public about, you know, being an active participant, you know, in, in your own, you know, private residence and ensuring that, um, that if you, if something is at a place or you do see something, um, a car door open in the middle of the night, a car door open, you know, when you're walking your dog at six o'clock in the morning and you're like, oh, there's a car door open and there's a car door open, call the police, um, and let us know because the likelihood is there was a crime that took place that night. So, um, I'm, I'm free to ask, you know, to discuss any questions you may have related to anything to the, to the limits that I can, um, you know, um, from a criminal investigatory standpoint, but I wanted to make myself available for that.
I think, you know, what time was that crime, uh, committed? I mean, it was very early in the morning, wasn't it?
Yeah, they were about two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's no rhyme or reason to the time. Generally, they're not taking place during the daytime, but, you know, to, to think that, you know, a crime can't be committed at one o'clock in the afternoon. Um, you know, we do have a, a big portion of the population that does. You can just see that in the train stations at their home now. You know, there's people here longer and they're at their homes longer. So, crime does seem to be more generated, but they, at nighttime, but they're not afraid, as we've seen, and it's not just in New Providence, it's in our surrounding communities, to go into those homes and look for the stuff that they want. Um, and generally, that is a key fob for a car. Um, and to, to think that they, you know, someone doesn't find that key fob and they won't go take that car and drive over your front lawn to get it out, out of your driveway, you know, it, it, they will. So, you know, you have to take extra measures in order to secure your property. Um, it's an unfortunate circumstance, but it's part of our education campaign.
So, do you think they're seeing the key fobs from like, from the out, like, how do they even know and where to look for those?
I, you know, I think, I, I like to believe that there's a little bit of common sense there, that, you know, most keys, if they're not hanging by a door or in a kitchen, that, you know, they're usually on a, a table near the door. Um, they will steal purses, um, in hopes that there's a fob in the car. Uh, most often times, they're, you know, they're looking for the fob in the car first, um, and then secondarily, they're going into the homes. They're going into the homes of the vehicles that they really are targeting. Um, and right now, those vehicles tend to be Audis and BMWs, but tho- that's now. You know, it could change. It could change in a month, um, what's relevant to, um, to whatever they're looking for. And, and most often times, those cars are being used to commit other crimes. And that's very apparent because of the follow-up crime. I know there was some anecdotal conversations that I've had about, you know, people can't believe that this, the car that was stolen from New Providence came back to commit a crime in New Providence. And I also say, you know, you don't give them too much credit. They don't really necessarily know that they're back in New Providence. It's just, and, and they were probably just a few houses away from being in Berkeley Heights at that point, but, um, they landed in New Providence, so.
I was amazed when we were talking that you actually said that you get eighty percent of the cars back.
We do. We get, so, you know, technology's great. Um, most of the, um, most of the cars have trackable. Um, especially the higher-end cars have tracking systems within them that do allow us to locate the cars. Um, oftentimes, those cars, they just get passed around, so they're not necessarily getting parked. And they are mobile the whole time that they're out, but inevitably, they do get parked. And we do deploy our officers down to areas that we've, that we've, are successful in finding these cars. And oftentimes, you know, by the diligent work of our detective bureau, they'll find them. Um, but not without the help of those jurisdictions that are finding them also.
Everybody can track their car on their app now, right?
A lot of them can, yeah. Not my cars.
Hope they don't like bus things.
I don't like minivans too.
Could you explain a little bit, you put out the, uh, the graph with the guns?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, certainly. Um, so, I, I, I appreciate you asking that. So, we had, um, we had put out some information, uh, probably last week or so to just kinda summarize, um, not, not so much state of New Jersey and across the country, but a, a lot of common sense, um, information that we wanted to educate the public on either gun safety, gun storage, or, uh, what, what could be a violation of a crime if you don't take those two actions into account. So, we put a nice graphic out there to, um, to educate the public on exactly what's, um, what their role is in this, in having a gun-safe community. Ultimately, you know, we don't control much of the mechanisms that are in place for the purchase of either a firearm, a long gun or a handgun, or the application for concealed carry permit, or the, uh, obtaining a firearms ID card. Um, all of those guidelines are set forth through statute and then promulgated through the state police. And where the investigating jurisdiction for them, um, the, the, the courts, the courts have taken a, a role, a step out of the approval process of some of these things. Uh, but ultimately, they all land on my desk for approval. Uh, following that, that proper chain of investigation, um, I'll review all of that information and subsequently either approve or deny. And Paul can attest that, you know, I, I have many questions for him. And, uh, we have just recently been in court for denials that there's something that fit within the state disabilities. So, there's, the state, you know, says, hey, here's the fourteen things that you can be approved for or can be disqualified for, excuse me, um, for firearm, either purchase or ownership or concealment. And if they don't fit those, one of them, they don't have to fit, you know, any myriad of, of them, but, um, if they don't fit one of them, we deny it. So, uh, and then we let the Superior Court in Union County and Elizabeth make that final decision as to whether or not, um, they're gonna approve the, the, the permits or the purchases of those firearms. So, um, you know, we, personally, we, the good thing is we still collect money here at the police department for the permits of these, of this process. So, having, um, those applicants come in, we always hand out, um, a gun lock with every, uh, permit application. And we also hand out, um, a similar education pamphlet, uh, just a takeaway for the, the individuals who do apply for those permits.
Sounds good. So, everyone who is coming in to pay for that, they do receive the gun safety literature and the gun lock?
Yeah, the, the gun lock is generally, um, on top of what they are getting in the firearm purchase that they may do to execute that permit. Um, because most firearms come with a gun lock, but we, we hand them out anyway.
You also, you also give them out during the, the take-back day. You have a whole, um,
Yeah.
the, the officers are there, they talk to people.
Yeah, and, I mean, any of the community relations stuff that we do, the street fair, you know, those are part of the, part and parcel to some of the literature and the giveaways that we do for individuals that want, make it available to them.
I just wanna say, you know, honestly, it moves here, you know, eighteen years ago for two reasons. One, the education system, right? My kids were, you know, three, two, and, and a, and a brand-new baby. I have four now. Two have been through the system, two are still in the system. Uh, and two was the safety, uh, uh, and of the community. You know, those are two really important things for me to move my family here. And I couldn't be more proud to, to say that it was the greatest thing I ever did in my life, right? My, my, I'm so proud to live here, so proud of the education system that my kids got, and I'm so proud of the, uh, the police department, right? That you grew up in, right? You've, like you said, you've been here for twenty-three years. You're the captain. I, I'm so happy, you know, that you're here and, and you're keeping, you know, the, the residents of New Providence safe. I couldn't feel safer. I know that there's bad people out there. I have a friend of mine lives in a great community as well. He said to me one day, he's like, you lock your door? I said, yeah, of course I lock my door. You know, I thought you said you lived in a safe town. I said, you know, anybody could break down, you know, on the highway and walk into your neighborhood, right? Like, I just take precaution, right? And I, and I think that's an important lesson for people. You take precaution, you know, do, do, be smart about, like you said, lighting up your property, right? Cameras or locking your doors. I tell my wife, you know, before you go to bed, 'cause she, she likes to stay up late and watch TV, and I go to sleep earlier than she does, I better not find a unlocked window when I get up in the morning. Go around the house and make sure all the windows are locked. And that's, that's what we do in my house. And, uh, again, I do that, uh, as a personal, you know, maybe I'm on OCD or something, I don't know. But, but again, I just, I, I, I've got the, uh, we've been fortunate enough to just meet a lot of the police officers as, you know, they've gone through the, you know, uh, process of, of working here and, you know, the past couple of police chiefs, we've been very fortunate to have some really great ones. And, you know, I just wanna thank you for everything that you do and all the police, uh, you know, for our community.
Uh, I appreciate that. And I, listen, I, I, it was something that I learned very quickly when I got hired here in two thousand, that, you know, our police department, you know, I, I grew up on the eastern side of Union County. Um, you know, we, I, I was, wasn't fortunate enough to, my house has been burglarized three times. We've been inside the house twice when it was. I understand the, how violating that is. Um, and I, I, it doesn't fall on deaf ears, um, because I know how important it is to the people. It's, it's not just in New Providence. People wanna feel safe in their own homes. I understand that. Um, but it's important for, it all goes back to that foundation that our officers lay every day in the community to build a trust, to know that we're responsive to the public's needs. And, um, and we want to build that trust so that even for something that they, that, that the public may think is mundane and not worth the time, it may be worth the time to us. It doesn't take, it's what we're here for. It doesn't take much for us to meet with somebody, hear their problem, and put it together in, uh, in a report. And then we can build upon, especially for crime-related stuff, we can build upon that report and, and share it amongst neighboring communities to find, you know, um, successful outcomes here.
Locking your door is called common sense.
And your windows.
And I've said it numerous times, every one of the officers that we have, I trust my life to each one of them. And it's a testament to you and your leadership too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, it's time we have, uh, public comments. Anybody wish you to address counsel?
One quick thing, Wendy, I think the, um, the Borough Administrator reports, do you normally link those in the, in the agenda or not?
Second meeting.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
Hi, Kathleen Dolan, um, twelve Loyal Drive. Uh, good evening. I have two topics tonight. And, uh, with Chief Hen here, it's very appropriate. So, as you know, one of my priority topics is firearm safety. And I'm glad we're gonna be having a public forum. I have to admit, I didn't see your graphic, so I don't know where it was posted, but I'm gonna have to go look for it.
So, on the police department page, right?
The police department page? Okay. Thank you.
Facebook page.
Website, Borough Facebook.
Okay, page, Borough, safety page, it's all on Facebook. Okay, yeah, I'll, I mean, I'm linked to all of that, but I didn't see it. But there's a lot of stuff going through my stream right now. Um, so, anyway, um, you know, firearm safety is not just a concern at the national level or urban settings. It's also at the local level. Just yesterday, at Hillview Farms on Myersville Road, which is about four miles from here, we heard of a sign that an owner has posted on near the parking lot. So, I'd like to share a copy of that sign with you guys. So, it says concealed carry patrons welcome. Uh, so this means that the business owner's making a point to welcome concealed weapon. You know, we're at the height of the fall season where many parents take their children to go on hayrides and enjoy apple picking and pumpkin picking. And I just wanted to ask all of you for your reaction to this type of sign. Um, is this something you would be comfortable with in the window of a New Providence business? Or conversely, would you have an objection to a local business owner posting a sign saying they do not allow concealed carry weapons in their establishment?
So, those are-
Give it to the chief.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Um, I just want, I just want to be clear on this particular, because I saw that say post. So, the law that changed in twenty-twenty-two and the sensitive places that were outlined require by statute that private property owners have to post or make known that a concealed carry is permitted on that property. So, I understand that posting, that, but without that posting, that a person who is concealed carrying on that property would actually be in violation of the state law. So, that property owner is making it known that it is, is appropriate to carry a concealed weapon. If they're actually, by law, they have to provide that permission. I just wanna be clear there.
Okay. I, that's a, my understanding is a little different than yours, so I will look into it further.
Sure.
Um, I think there was something about Judge Bum's ruling where she kind of stayed some of that information that was, that she had previously overturned. So, anyway, just the, the sign itself is very disturbing. Let's put it that way.
There is also, if I'm correct, I'm wrong, I don't know, but, um, there was something about the sens-, you were talking about sensitive locations, right? And, and that's kind of something that's really been moving, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, so the sensitive places legislation that was put in place in December twenty-two articulated a lot of locations within the state. A lot of them are very common sense. Um, I, what I, what I will tell you is that as the law, the law has, is currently under review and it's being litigated, several different areas of the law are being litigated. Some of the, um, some of, some of them, the one judge has moved past. Um, some of those are con, public places, parks. They, they haven't really, um, they moved past those. It was private property issues. It was, um, entertainment facilities. Uh, those are the ones that haven't been finalized from the state side, uh, whether or not they're gonna maintain to be legal or not. So, I, I think it was twenty-two places, but the twenty-two places articulated, there were kind of like a lot more places under one.
Combined under one, right.
Um, this is one of, I know I'd spoken to Public Safety about this back in January.
Yeah.
Um, I do anticipate that at some point, we are going to have to, we're going to have to address this through some ordinance revisions. But we, we shouldn't be updating those revisions because the law isn't even actually finalized.
Exactly. Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, there's a, oral arguments are being heard in, uh, the Third Circuit Court on October twenty-fifth. And then my understanding, it'll take probably another year before it's codified in the legislation. So, we've got a while before any kind of ordinance work would be done. But, anyway, I, I, I mean, obviously, there was a lot of traffic about this um, on social media. And it's the first time really, sort of in this area, that I've seen this manifested this way. So, I just wanted to bring it forward and say, uh, you know, this is the law. He's right. Um, and, you know, private business owners and New Providence could decide that they wanna put something like this up?
They could. It's the law.
It's the law.
And like I, like, the law is the law. We take an oath when we take office that we have to follow the Constitution of the United States and the state of New Jersey and all the laws that go along with it. And, you know, we don't make the law. You know, we make ordinances that pertain to the, to the town, but we can't supersede what, what the-
No, I understand.
what the state and federal government does. So, until these, these, uh, arguments are totally, uh, resolved, we, we really can't move on anything. So, it doesn't matter what our personal, uh, uh, yeah, views are. We just have to follow the law.
Okay, so, that's fine. Um, thank you. Secondly, um, there've been many resolutions passed over the recent months related to expenses required to support the transition of the emergency dispatch services to Union County. Uh, I've had some recent discussions with some Lantern Hill residents, and they raised a concern regarding the impact of this change, if there might be any impact on the response time in the case of emergencies requiring ambulance assistance. So as our senior population grows, ambulance response time unfortunately become more important for this segment of the community. And I was wondering if you could, if anybody here could just walk us through, like if somebody calls 911, where does it go? And then what does that person do? Who do they get in touch with? And are the New Providence Volunteer Emergency Services involved at any point in time? How does that, how's that decision made? Oh, sorry.
So, um, what's that?
Good timing, you're here.
So, so a 911 call comes in, um, anywhere, whether it's mobile, through a landline, it will be routed into what's called a PSAP. That PSAP is directed geographically to our Mountain Valley Communications Center currently. Prior to that, it went to our old dispatch center in, in Providence, please, pardon. I don't want to oversimplify it, but it's a matter of just flipping a switch and then the call goes to Union County Dispatch. So from, there, there won't be a delay. Um, the part of, there's a bigger discussion about Lantern Hills ambulance response line, which is being addressed through that planning process. Which is probably why, you know, you're, you're hearing about it. Um, but the reality of there's not a delay from the dispatching side of things. So our officers in New Providence are trained first responders. They will be dispatched to any call service prior to the arrival of any ambulance or fire apparatus that would be needed there. To administer at that particular, it's not that particular location, but throughout the borough. So the difference that Lantern Hill does have is they do have trained EMTs that are on staff there that give them an extra level of security. But our officers do respond to all those calls before any ambulance would get there. So I, 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 I want to be very clear, um, there, there, we've been moving rapidly towards our goal to get down to the county before the end of the year. And that's, the spending is appropriate with where, with that transition. But I wanted to be abundantly clear to the public that there will be no disruption in service. There will be no disruption in response time from the police, fire, EMS, that, that, that transition is seamless without any issues.
And I could just say, you know, when we had the discussion about moving over, I was in the meeting. And the first question, or I should say, the first discussion point was on the cost and savings, right? But my first question was on service, right? Uh, and we had the EMS team, we had the fire team, and we had the police team, right? And each of them, you know, had reviewed currently what the services that were being provided today versus what was going to be provided. And each one assured that it's going to be better. And there's a lot of reasons for that. Uh, and I'll give a, a, a high level example that I got was with our current dispatch system. And again, I, I'm not an expert, right? So I'm generalizing here. But a call would come in and it may be coded something where the county will be able to code it differently or in a, in a way that our police, our fire, our EMS can react. I guess more expedient with more information. Let's put it that way, right? Not, um, not incorrect information, just more information that will help them respond appropriately. So great question. Absolutely. The very first question that we asked to make sure before this move happened, that, that was, that was the reason why.
Great.
And Lisa, Nadine and I were up at Lantern Hill on Sunday. And that question came up and I, I explained how it was, how it was, um, how it was done. Not as eloquently as you. They understood and they know we're working with Erickson to, uh, to enhance the service up there. And I have to say, Erickson's working with us. And hopefully we can come up with some different, uh, plans up there, so.
Okay. Thank you so much.
They got the point.
I, I, I'm sure they got the point. And, and your, your, um, your comments were, um, right along the lines of the comments that I was making. This is a complex issue. And the, and the expansion at Lantern Hill adds to the complexity of this issue. And, and my concern was that so many towns everywhere you go, there are signs up, we need volunteers, we need volunteers, we need volunteers. My concern is we're expanding big time, the need for the service and, and we're perhaps having a diminishing, um, force to, to meet that demand. Complex. I get it. I want to bring up two things. Mayor Morgan, at the last meeting, you, um, mentioned about the reconsideration of the height of the buildings downtown would be, would be discussed next year. And, and I just wanted to, to remind you that, that, uh, Councilman, um, Kamisky had mentioned at a previous meeting that it would have been taking up at the next planning board meeting. And so I just have the question of what, what prompted a decision and why to go ahead and move it to next year, the discussion.
We wanted to get more facts, uh, what, what, what it would do. So we decided, you know, we'll put it off till the, uh, beginning of the year. We want to get this affordable housing piece out of the way, which is very important. So, you know, you can't do everything all at once, so.
I'm in favor of facts. Very good. Thank you. I, I, my only concern is that what, what happens is if, if there's a plan that's submitted under the current.
There's nothing in the pipeline. So the last thing was the Summit, what is it? I say Summit Trust. Did you tell my age? The Bank of America. And that's going to be renovated, but it's not, there's no addition to it on top. So that's the only thing in the pipeline.
Thank you. This, this one's, I have one more issue. Last night, Councilwoman Joffrey, in, in response to a question about business, reported that Keith Lynch has reported that there are people, uh, calling in about business opportunities in New Providence. And, um, Councilwoman Joffrey mentioned that the businesses are full. And if you see something that is vacant right now, it's, uh, in between tenants. And, um, and, and Mayor, you also said that we're full. Um, that was at, at last night's meeting. I, I just, today, without, as quickly as possible, I just, I want to say that at 309 South, 98 Floral, 219 South, 139 South, 41 Spring Street, 675 Central, Dean 35 Springfield and 121, um, Chanlon constitutes 88,000, uh, over 88,000 square feet of office space that's, um, being advertised as vacant today, um, by multiple listing agencies. And, and I just wanted to say that, um, 88,000 square feet, I mean, if we, as a, some perspective, if, if we go across the street over to the Haven Apartments, uh, a one bedroom apartment over there goes for $1,999 per month, uh, one bedroom, one bath. And that apartment is 500 square feet. So the equivalent of 88,000 empty square feet across the street would be 176 apartments with, uh, a, a revenue of $356,000 per month for rent. So I think that we would be rather concerned, um, if such a situation existed in the town. There would be a clamoring as to what, you know.
Do you think, do you think we're having trouble, do you think our downtown is, is not thriving? Is that what you're saying? I'm not, I'm not sure I understand your question.
The, last night it was stated that we are full.
We are pretty much full. That's absolutely true. You're talking about 88,000 square foot in our town? The entire town?
Well, that's just eight properties. I didn't even, I didn't go beyond the eight properties.
I'm just curious. I'm, I'm not sure I understand. Are you saying that we're having trouble attracting businesses? I think, I'm, what's the point?
Is the definition of full, and, and 88,000 square feet?
I think the definition of full is, is about that. I would agree, yes. I would say that if we have about 88,000 square feet of empty space in our town that is absolutely thriving economically, that is pretty, pretty much full. That's very good. Yeah, I, I'm asking if you're, I'm just trying to understand. Are you trying to say that as a bad thing or a good thing?
88,000 square feet of empty space seems to me that if you've got buildings that have 30,000 square feet, you know, that are empty, that that's a concern. And I'm, I'm trying to put out the perspective that in, that in certain situations, you would be losing quite a bit of revenue for the owners of those buildings.
Okay. And I think to the point maybe, and I wasn't there, I don't know the, the response, but I'll tell you this. You may not be aware of all of the situations that are happening to all these properties, right? There's a property in town that may, uh, that, that has a, an owner that may have been arrested, right? It'd be going through some litigation. That property may not be able to do anything until that surts its way out. We have a property that, uh, we have, we have two of our biggest downtown properties were purchased, actually three, if you include one that was already purchased by a person who lives in this town, who's investing his own money on major properties in our own downtown. And, and those, his businesses are thriving. Uh, they are empty properties right now that are, that have been, uh, the work done through, and, and let me say this, someone comes into town and, and we have a lot of people that want to come into town. Can't take everything, we had Wonder come in. They wanted to go over on Central Ave. You know what? We want one. That'd be fantastic. However, that just wasn't a good location for them, right? That didn't work because of the where it was. So there's a lot of nuances that go into businesses that want to come into town and where they can be and what makes sense for them, what makes sense for the community, what makes sense for the residents, what makes sense for the traffic. There's a lot that goes on with that. And I, and I think what I heard was Keith Lynch is fielding a lot of conversations on that. And I believe that's true. Again, because I, our business community in New Providence is doing extremely well today. Now, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, maybe not so much, right? But I think everything we've been building over those last, you know, 10 to 15 years has been getting to a point where we are today, where New Providence is a thriving community. Not only for residents, but for our businesses as well.
Businesses are turning over. So just because you see maybe an empty building, doesn't mean that it's available. You know, it's in the process of the transactions closing or they're deciding what to do with it. There's another one on South Street where I know that they're, you know, looking at plans and things take a while. So just because something's empty doesn't necessarily mean that it's sitting there with no one interested in it. It's probably already owned and it's just in the process of getting developed.
So that's my question. Have you contacted all the owners of these buildings to confirm that they're empty buildings?
I'm, I'm just posing a question. I mean, if the, if the.
So, so you're speculating, so you are speculating that these are not in any kind of process. So you're just speculating.
Making an accusation. You're being extremely defensive.
No, I'm not. I'm asking for clarification on your question.
The, the definition, when someone looks at it, perhaps it's a communication issue. I don't know.
Semantics. I mean, semantics. Honestly, I think it's semantics is what it turns out at the end of the day. You know, we're, we're, you know, trying to explain to you that, you know, to, to say it's full, right? Maybe it's not 100%. Maybe it's 99.1 or maybe it's 98.9. That's pretty full, right? And I think semantically was the point that we're doing very well economically. Businesses are trying to come into town. And I think, you know, not trying to be defensive, but just trying to make sure that we are explaining, right? Uh, and again, I wasn't sure whether, I wasn't sure if you were, you were questioning whether or not that was a good or bad thing in the beginning. So I apologize.
I'm, I'm just, I presenting what was available on the listings. I, I don't, I, I have no intention of calling all of the people to check. I, I don't think that you're going to do that tomorrow. Or I don't think that Keith Lynch is going to do that tomorrow. The point is just the discussion that we're having here. It's perfect. But that when you make a statement saying that we're full, we're full, and then you go and you just, and, and all I've done is look at the number of signs and just went and checked to see what the listings were. So I'm only posing a question. Whether or not it, it's a valid question is really what this discussion is about. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not here, I don't think in the, in the four years or so that I've been coming here and speaking that I'm accusing you of, of things. I'm generally trying to present issues that I think people in the community have questions about from time to time. And that's exactly what I'm doing today.
Thank you. I was just going to say that Nadine is a very approachable person. If you had a misunderstanding, you could definitely just go up to her and have a conversation with her since.
Well, I, I think what I just said about the intent of my, of my presenting here is if you don't, I've been around for a while. If you don't present something in a, in a way that presents it, that people are going to respond, you're not going to have this discussion. I understand, I, I, I understand that, you know, that perhaps the definition of full means that 88,000 square feet of empty space with planned, uh, people coming into it is perfectly fine. That's what I'm saying. It's just that I, I think that for the community, it's really good to have out that the semantics properly explained to everyone so that people understand. Yes, we're really doing well. So don't, the fact that you see all the, and you know, these signs along is not a sign of anything that's negative. That's, that's why I'm up here talking about it tonight. And it just was something that I thought was important to, to have a discussion about.
Thank you.
And to just reiterate, Diane, we're always an email or phone call away as well. So, thank you.
No, I thought this, I thought this would be an important discussion.
Perfect.
And it was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish you to address counsel? Yes, Donna?
Donna Day, 54 Bookside Drive. First of all, apologies earlier for the interjection. I know I'm not supposed to speak. But I just, you know, I didn't want to have to wait an hour to say.
I always get that too wrong.
Okay, um, then I have a question for you, which is I just want to clarify because you said it, but it wasn't written. The name of the company providing the holiday lighting, it says holiday lighting in here, the name is Christmas Decor?
Yes, Christmas Decor.
But the holiday lighting will be holiday lighting, not Christmas lighting? I mean.
That's just the name of the company. It's very, it's just holidays.
I saw it, but I know the entire borough.
Thank you. That's what I, thank you so much.
It's just lighting. And another point in fact, I wanted to bring up, um, I post for a lot of people on Facebook in this town, update various things. And I also did not see what was there because Facebook has changed its algorithms. And I am liking all the borough and the police and I'm like, you know, every time I see it, I like it in the hopes that Facebook will start showing me more. And when it says, do you want to see more? I'm like, yes, this one. That's why I have subscribed to it. So just because it got put on Facebook, it is absolutely understandable to me that people aren't seeing it. And I think that's unfortunate because arg, but I just wanted to let you know that, um, I, I also want to know where else to look for, if you're saying it's on newprov.org as well? Okay, thanks.
Nobody misses the lost puppies though, right?
If it's got cats, then currently Facebook knows cats.
No, I, I think you bring up a very valid point, right? I think a lot of people get information from social media based on what they like and what they are, are, are communicating, right? And interacting with, right? Uh, and some of those are very narrow in some respects, right? And I think we, we try to, we try to communicate all the time how important it is to get information from the sources, right? Those sources are the, the emergency, the PBA, emergency, uh, Facebook page, right? Those sources are the, the emergency, the PBA, emergency Facebook page, right? Our police Facebook page, our, our website, right? And, and we try to push everything out. And the things that are being pushed out, we try to bring them back to the, to the Facebook page. And so, you know, I, I, I please encourage you to say, you know, as things, as you do see things that pop up through those social media platforms, that maybe take a peek and let people know, hey, it's over here, right? Or has anybody ever seen this or whatever? I, I know you, I know, I know you do a lot of the homework for a lot of people, unfortunately. But, but, but again, I mean, it's definitely something that we've been pushing forever, right? Information, you know, should come from the, from the sources. And in a lot of cases, you know, it kind of runs off in its own direction. Like you said, not everybody is, you know, seeing everything, right? And there's nothing we could do, right?
No, no.
You know, we can't, we can't create better algorithms, unfortunately.
That's why I try to look at newprop.org. And I believe you're keeping stuff around longer because I can search for it now and still find it. Whereas before it felt like it was expiring after, like I would look for news and I would say, oh, I remember seeing something about this and it had expired and gone away. And so I think that stuff's sticking around longer that I can search for it now. The new webpage is working for me sometimes.
And you could sign up for the alerts, right? If you sign up on the new webpage, you can get alerts and some, some, a lot of that as well, so.
So Free Cycle Fest you mentioned, at Free Cycle Fest, Free Cycle Fest. I was approached by someone with a question that I'm passing along. Snow blower season is coming up. I know my neighbors always got the newspapers tangled up in their snow blowers. So they were wondering, the, the, I understand that the newspaper has, if you open it up and read it, a way to say, no, I don't want this delivered. But when the newspaper was allowed to opt, when the newspaper allowed to set up the, you have to call to opt out of the newspaper, might have been a different era than we are in currently when those people are getting their news through electronic means or New Providence News being, and the quarterly newsletter being mailed to us and things like that. So they were asking if this could be somehow revisited, that newspapers were not being tossed out once a week onto people's lawns or that there was a way to get it take. If, for example, now that I'm now walking again, I'm going for walks. And I'm finding again, if there's a housing, a house under construction or something like that, those newspapers are piling up because no one is living there, removing them away. And, and just on my street, I found two in the gutters after the last rainstorm. So if there is a way to possibly revisit that, I know they need their circulation and things like that. But that there might be something. I don't know if you want to think of that as recycle or littering or what, but it was brought up to me.
I'll have to ask our attorney. I don't, I, I don't know if you can stop it.
I can't imagine how we could. Just off the top of my head, it's something.
So they haven't worked out a thing that says that they're allowed to throw out newspapers on everyone's property once a week? I mean, I assume they'd work that out with the town or something.
You know, I don't believe that that's private property. I think it's not anything to do with the town.
But I can object when somebody's dog leaves their business on my lawn. I can go chase them down and say, hey, it's a dog. So.
I understand, but are you, are you talking about a newspaper being thrown onto a driveway, for example, that was not subscribed to?
Correct.
Donna's right. It's once in a while I'll get a, a, a real newspaper, not, not the Flyers.
Not the ones that you've specifically asked for.
Right, right.
But it was sort of, it used to be the Star Ledger. It was a lesser version, but it's now the low.
Right.
And you can call up and say, no, I don't want it. But that's an opt out. And they were trying to figure out, okay, well, at least now I know that there is no actual understanding with the town to do that they could do this. All right, that was just me passing along someone's complaint. And then I just wanted to ask, well, A, thank you. The Safe for Elsis School grant that you're going out for. Yay. And when possibly might there be updates on these outstanding ones? I know others, am I allowed to ask? Where, where we're at at any of that?
I had a meeting with Aurora, which is the company for, that's doing the design work for the twenty eighteen grant last week. They're moving into phase two. They had some issues with some elevations and stuff like that. The twenty sixteen grant is in, I believe, final design stage. And the twenty twenty two grant is still in the initial design phase.
Okay. And the twenty sixteen grant, the New Jersey Transit has said, no, you can't. All right. Thank you.
Isn't it amazing twenty sixteen? The hoops you have to go through to get things done. It's crazy.
And thank you to Bernadette, who deals with all of those.
Okay, anyone else wish you to address counsel? See, no one. I declare the public hearing closed.
Am I allowed to make one comment? Sorry, is this not? No. I just wanted to, since we were talking about them, give a shout out to all of our volunteer first responders who do respond whenever they can and they do an amazing job. I hear my son running across the house and they get to their fire station and EMS station very rapidly. So shout out.
Okay.
Second.
We only clean. Okay, I need, let's see. I need a motion for items one through thirty, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Felisca?
Aye.
Mr. Disarno?
Aye.
Mr. Kaminski?
Aye.
Mrs. Joffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Kogan?
Yes.
Mrs. McKnight?
Yes.
Pete wanted me to say the PDA is, and is hosting the trunk or treat and pumpkin decorating contest at the New Providence Pool Parking Lot, October twenty second, from one to two thirty PM. And come just trick or treating. And I know they're working in conjunction with the New Providence Lions Club. And the PDA is hosting a blood drive at the school gym on Monday, October twenty third. So donate if you're able to.
You wouldn't miss that. Go on, Pete.
Okay. At this point?
Resolution?
No, I got a, we got a new closed session. I need a motion. Before we do that, read the title for resolution six eight, please.
Resolution establishing October ten, two thousand twenty three as the date and nine twenty five PM as the time. And the municipal center as the place for the holding of a special session of the mayor and council of the borough of New Providence to discuss personnel matter involving the Director of Community Activities Department.
I'm a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Felisca?
Aye.
Mr. Disarno?
Aye.
Mr. Kaminski?
Aye.
Mrs. Joffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Kogan?
Yes.
Mrs. McKnight?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. And, yeah, we'll reopen after our discussion.